Good evening. I have 7:00 PM here on Thursday, November 7th. Like to call a select board meeting to order and remind everyone that we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for public comment? It's green. Anybody here for public comment? Okay. Review and approval of minutes for October 24th, 2024.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 10:24:24.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 4-0. 10:24. Okay. Town manager report.
Good evening. Mr. Dunham is away at a conference for a couple of days at a meeting, and I have a couple of updates for you. The first thing I just want to really reflect on is our town election on Tuesday, and express my great gratitude to all of the staff in the town clerk's office, Lanay Afretes, Sue Lundquist, and of course Taylor White, along with all of the election workers that helped support both the work ahead in the early voting and the day of the election. And I can't say enough about the coordination and support by volunteers and staff, police department, fire department, town clerk, Department of Public Works, and the community for a really peaceful and successful day of voting here in Sandwich. So, thank you to everyone that was involved in that. And then just another one, I think we are all discussing, is the 111 Beach Norrisment Project. We'll have a nice post about that tomorrow, but it looks like we're about two-thirds of the way through the Norrisment Project. They're moving as quickly as they projected that they would. If you have an opportunity to get down there, you know tomorrow's note is blink. If you blink, you might miss it. So this is the weekend to get down if you'd like an opportunity to see what's going on down there. It really is incredibly impressive work, both on the pre-planning and regulatory side by the Army Corps of Engineers and the town of Sandwich who funded all of the pre-permitting work, and Great Lakes Dredge and Dock who are performing really excellently in terms of just coordinating the effort and doing a great job. And of course, thanks to the public for, you know, maintaining their distance and keeping safe, safely away from the work areas. It's soon to be a really a gem of the upper Cape, and we can't wait to see it. So, that's a great progress there. I wanted to give you an update on a couple of things. One, we had a design meeting on this building. You all know that we've appropriated funds to take a look at exterior repairs, some of the water intrusion that we've seen in a couple of locations on the portico by these back stairs, and then taking a look at replacing all of these windows with safer, you know, more energy efficient, historically acceptable windows in this building. It does look like the damage from water on the front portico may be more than we expected. We had a lift out here on Monday morning with the architect and engineer. So, you know, we'll know a little bit more about that, but I think we'll have a nice scope of work and a cost estimate for this project. And I think we'll have to decide together, you know, as a community, whether that's something we want to take on in pieces over time, or something we'd like to do as a bigger project. We will be caring for this building in perpetuity, so there may not be a wrong answer, but we'll have a lot more to know about the building in the next several weeks as we look forward to, you know, appropriations for the Springtown meeting. And we do have a significant amount of funding that was appropriated last year that could allow us to move forward with a partial project sooner, if that's what we choose to do. So stay tuned for that. We do have a beautiful Norway spruce tree that was planted with Johnson Tree Farm and our parks superintendent, James Sacco, up at 100 Route 6A, which will be our permanent holiday tree. So that was nice to see that out there. If you drive by, it's, it looks great. It's appropriately sized. It doesn't draw attention away from the other heritage trees that are out there, so it was a nice selection. Two other brief notes for all of you. There are two meetings that the region through the Cape Cod Commission are hosting that I thought you would like to know about. One is about developing design plans for small-scale building types that could be pre-permitted, that would provide more compact dense housing in Cape Cod communities, including Sandwich. They're holding a public forum on that. There are two of them. One is at the Gus Canty Community Center in Falmouth on Thursday, November 14th at 7:30, and the other one is in Eastham on the 15th at 2:00 PM. Again, this is just to get feedback about community interest, tolerance, you know, input on compact design that could be pre-permitted by the communities and available to the building community to build more compact housing. And then the other one is a public meeting at our own Center for Active Living on November 13th at 5:30. This is a much bigger, broader discussion about the development of a community land trust and housing land bank with a focus on building more housing in appropriate locations on Cape Cod. And this will be a higher level discussion about the need for a regional entity to help drive those efforts across the Cape. Again, that's here in Sandwich, which we're lucky to have them. We will definitely have some participation there, but the public should know about it, and we'll share this with all the regulatory boards. And if you're interested in that meeting, it'll be here at the Center for Active Living. And that is it for me.
Great, please. Any questions for Heather?
Heather, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I've had a number of questions about the Wing School Housing Project and
Yes.
How people can, if even, accepting any type of
I wish I had
I know there's a phone number you're referring
There is. I don't have it handy, but they have set up a website for folks to pre-register or make contact with the developer that will be doing the housing lottery as well as the rental of those units. So they can contact our office at Town Hall. We have that information. I don't have it at the top of my, at my fingertips, but it's, there is a place for people to inquire.
And then Heather, please, one for me too. The improvements on this building, as I recall, outside lighting is included?
The outside lighting may move ahead of that project. We're looking at doing some improved lighting out here.
Fantastic.
Which is necessary.
Fantastic, thank you. Correspondence statements, announcements? Anybody? I have a couple, if you don't mind, not to be reiterative, but state elections. Thank you to the 13,635 Sandwich citizens who exercise their right to vote. Thank you again to the town clerk's office from early voting through Election Day, and thank you again to our emergency services departments and all of volunteers who helped in support. Tomorrow, November 8th, the Sandwich Middle High School will be hosting a final eight field hockey game at 3:30 PM. Let's wish our currently undefeated young ladies all the best going forward. Monday, the 11th, Veterans Day, let's remember to keep and maintain thanks and prayers for all who served our United States of America. Again, special town meeting, please make your plans to attend and participate in the meeting to be held at the Sandwich Middle High School on Monday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. Bikeways and pedestrian committee, they will not be having a regular meeting in November. However, all are encouraged to attend a presentation by the Cape Cod Commission to be held at the Sandwich Center for Active Living on Thursday, November 21st at 6:00 PM, in an effort to improve roadway safety on Cape Cod. The commission is developing a vision zero action plan to identify and eliminate vehicle crashes that result in injuries to occupants, pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users. And finally, for right now, Sandwich Cares is meeting at the Sandwich Public Library on Tuesday, 11/26 at 6:00 PM. Thank you. That's all I have at the moment. So we'll move on to staff meeting. Mark Robinson and John Colletti, the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts and Sandwich Conservation Fund, I'm sorry, that's a trust as well, Hog Pond Land Donation by the Van Buskirk Family. Gentlemen?
Just make sure the green light is on your microphone, and your microphone is close to you when speaking.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mark Robinson. I'm the executive director of the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts, and I work on behalf of the Sandwich Conservation Trust. John Colletti, the president of the Sandwich Conservation Trust is here with me. We're here tonight to seek your approval of a permanent conservation restriction on almost four acres on the shores of Hog Pond owned by the Van Buskirk family. And Hog Pond is a very special place in Sandwich. First of all, it is a, what's known globally as a coastal plain pond, and this, these are ponds that are kettle ponds without inlets or outlets that have, in this case, rare plants that grow on the shore of the pond. And there are several ponds like this in Sandwich, but Hog Pond is considered kind of the hotbed for them. In addition, this four acres is within the DEP Zone 2 to the public water supply of the Sandwich Conservation District. And the purpose of the conservation restriction is to eliminate potential development of two houses on the four acres at the south end of the Van Buskirk property. And we've been working with the family over several years to design a conservation strategy which would, we hope, will include more land as time goes on. This particular proposal is eligible for a state conservation land tax credit available to the Van Buskirk's for this donation of the conservation restriction. And so I've been helping with the paperwork on this. Under the Mass General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, the Select Board is required to review the proposal and to determine whether it's in the public interest to preserve this property. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Ellis?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor of it.
Understood. Have a motion?
Okay. Since we used to see a
Right, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, like, motion. We, the undersigned being the majority of the Select Board of the town of Sandwich, Massachusetts, hereby certify that as a public meeting duly held on November 7th, 2024, the Select Board voted to approve the foregoing conservation restriction from Eric J. Van Buskirk, trustee of PLF Realty Trust, to Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust Incorporated, in the public interest pursuant Section 32, Chapter 184 of Massachusetts General Laws.
Second. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a signature page, unless you have one, that I'd be happy to collect signatures and notarize it if that's appropriate.
Can you use that, there's marked page right there? You'd like to circulate that now? You can take it and notarize it and get it back to us.
Well, it's got Mr. Hockter as chair, and it eliminated my middle initial, which I scribble in all the time. Could we just?
We can revise that, and we have staff that can notarize, so we'll take care of that.
That's fine, I'll work with town manager's office. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, John, very much.
Fire chief John J. Burke, Born in Sandwich, intermunicipal agreement for Phillips Road and draft debris management plan. Chief and Paul Tilton, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. I brought Paul with me. We're going to do debris management first, and then we will look at the Born Sandwich IMA. Just for context, there's three plans that emergency management, public safety have to have on file. The comprehensive plan, the SEP, which this board approved last year. The hazard mitigation plan, which is a FEMA required plan, which we are almost done with, we're on revision five. We should have that ready to go next month. And then, we looked at debris management. I think what happened in North Carolina and Tennessee opened a lot of eyes, at least up here. So, working with Paul, we put together a FEMA-approved draft debris management plan. And we want to have it approved and on record, and make sure that we have our plans in place as to what we're going to do if a significant storm, and it's, you know, at some point it's going to happen, what are we going to do with debris management? And this was our first stab at an updated debris management plan, which you have in front of you. Paul, you want to add anything?
Yeah, thanks, chief. I'd only add that it's a pretty solid plan in terms of, you know, determining what we do for storm management from start to finish, more specifically debris management. And we've had a lot of practice, obviously with nor'easters. This relates more towards larger storms and provides really good guidance on resources available. We seek out to get help, that FEMA and MEMA responsibilities and our coordination with them as well. And, you know, I think it's a real good plan and to provide that guidance for us, but it also allows us some flexibility during storms to make our own decisions, because a lot of things happen that you can't be prepared for. So we kind of have policies within our policies, and we meet with the emergency team frequently to talk about these. And a lot of things get taken care of during storms, but this is a really good guidance to get us from start to finish.
I compliment the forward thinking. Does anybody else have any comments?
Is this more than just Phillips Road and those areas of coverage you're helping out with, right?
Oh yeah, this is town-wide. Yep.
Well, either town can call on each other, or?
So this is separate from the Born thing.
Okay.
So this is completely, this is just town-wide, yeah, debris management. I think one of the interesting things Paul and I looked at is Army Corps and FEMA have a formula, and they say if you're hit with a category three storm, they estimate the acreage you would need for all of the debris with a plus or minus 30%, which, that's a big swing, but we're looking at about 43 acres we would need for about nine different types of debris. And Paul's done a good job of educating me on how we're going to segregate that, the different locations that we've chosen, and how that's going to work. So, we're taking lessons learned from Hurricane Helene down south, and again, we're trying to apply it in a timely manner here. So all we're looking for this evening is a motion to accept the draft plan. If there's any changes, you will be notified. Minor changes, you know, we'll let you know, but the, I think the goal is to get this approved, make sure we're comfortable with it, include it in the January 1 version of the comprehensive plan for the town that we can then embed as part of it as an appendix. Come January 1, we will be, for the first time in a while, all three plans that we're supposed to have on file will be up to date and approved by FEMA, MEMA, and the board here.
Very good.
Which is good for us in case
That's a fine accomplishment indeed, chief, yes. Okay. Have a motion to endorse the debris plan.
Make a motion, we endorse the Born Sandwich Intermunicipal Agreement for Phillips Road.
Well, excuse me, Bob, no, this is on the disaster debris.
Oh, okay.
Only at first. Sorry about that. Thank you. There you go.
Okay. Yes, how do we want to do it? Disaster debris management?
Management plan as distributed by November 2024.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve the disaster debris management plan, November 2024, as presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
Excellent.
Again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice job, very forward-thinking. Now back to the mutual aid plan, if I may.
So, I'll give you some background on this. So I was notified in March from some residents on Phillips Road that their homeowners insurance, and for context, the insurance service organization, ISO, gives a rating for each community. The lower the number between 1 and 10, the better. We were at a 3, which is good. When I started my career, we were a 6. So, my assumption was everybody's a 3, until I got notified that there is a clause in the evaluation that if your home is more than five miles from a fire station, you go to an ISO 10. So my counter to that was, there's been a mutual aid agreement with Cape and Islands Fire Chiefs for longer than I've been alive. I submitted that signed agreement to ISO, they kicked it back and said, "We don't acknowledge mutual aid agreements." I then went to the Born Fire Chief and said, "Okay, phase two, let's do a signed line response agreement that is attached to the current mutual aid agreement." We did that, we submitted it, and they sent it back saying, "No, it still falls under mutual aid." So then, we went back to the drawing board, and I talked to Bud, and we talked to town council, and we felt the, and I verified this with ISO, if we have a signed intermunicipal contract agreement with a fiduciary amount assigned to it, would that then take care of the requirement allowing the Born Fire Station on Meeting House Road, which is 2.5 miles from Phillips Road, which is within the five miles, to then accept that and have the ISO ratings for our property owners on Phillips Road go from a 10 to a 3? And the answer was yes. So then we drafted this IMA, met with the town manager in Born, our town manager, both town councils. So for this to be executed, both boards of selectmen have to sign it, and both fire chiefs and town managers. So it's an exhaustive workaround to an issue that's pretty clear, but it is a technicality. And the irony is, the town of Born has no properties that are greater than five miles from their station. So when you look at reciprocal Sagamore Inn, any of those South Sagamore properties, we respond to that as part of the mutual aid agreement, but there's not a need for an intermunicipal agreement because they're within the five miles. So this is an issue that is going to affect some lower Cape communities, but all of our other properties are within the five miles, and it's 5.6 miles, just to be clear, and it's driving miles to get to 200 Phillips Road. That's the first property in the town of Sandwich. So, this is what we came up with. It does have a three-year window, we can revisit it, but it is significant, even though there's not a ton of properties over there. When you go from an ISO 10, which basically says you have no fire protection, which is slightly insulting, to both towns, as a technicality, to get them down to a 3, they'll be paying just like everybody else with all other properties here. So, a lot of work for something that, you know, is a technicality, we want to make sure we are on the up and up, and it's clear, and it's been vetted by both town councils.
Insurance safety organization can be difficult at times, chief, right?
It can be difficult to navigate.
And the $100 fee, I think, is well worth it.
It is. I was going to go with a dollar, but I said I better do 100, just in case. But again, the fiduciary piece really solidifies that contract, that intermunicipal agreement, it shows, you know, buy-in, and that's what ISO is looking for. Handshake agreement we have now for the insurance industry or for ISO is not, they look at as not compliant. So we wanted to make sure that we're taking care of the property owners over the bridge, and they're getting the same rating as everybody else.
The technicalities of it are understood and appreciated. Thank you.
Do you have any fires over there in the last few years at which they were affected by this?
So, we've had a couple fires, but Born's been there first, and they do medicals also. So Scussit Beach, Phillips Road are all in the town of Sandwich, and anytime there's a call with anything, water rescue, doesn't matter, Born, that station goes, and then we piggyback behind, and then the determination is made who's going to transport or what's going to happen. It's a unique geographical thing to the town, it's unique for response, but again, longer than I've been alive, there's been a fire station at the Rotary in Sagamore, even when the bridges were redone, and they would always go. I think Selectman George can verify that with his many years in the fire service, that that has been a longstanding agreement, but ISO does not recognize longstanding agreements. They're very technical, so we felt this was the best way to go to address the issue, get them to sign off on it, and then for the residents over there to get the appropriate insurance rating.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the District 5 fire response intermunicipal agreement between Sandwich and Born as presented?
Make a motion, we approve the agreement, District 5 response intermunicipal agreement as presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Paul. All business, special town meeting, November 18th, 2024, preparation meeting, November 14th, 2024, at 3:00 PM? The, no, the preparation meeting?
Preparation.
3:30. Have anything else on that?
Do you want to run through the warrant at all? You've done it many times. There's only one unique change here, which you may or not have seen, and that is in the back of the reference material. There's an explanation of warrant articles, and that is a new requirement as a result of some of the charter changes. And so Bud's made that effort and reviewed with town council to make sure that those explanations meet the standards of the charter. So that's something a little different that we haven't seen in the past, and we'll make sure we include those in the presentation. That is it. The only other, sort of quick update for you, just informational, is that a few of us attended the Sandwich Realtors meeting on Wednesday, yesterday morning. Myself, Dave Mason, and Leanne Drake to talk about the Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan and the WIF articles. And interestingly, they all already knew about it, and the Cape and Island Board of Realtors has a videotape where they, in fact, are supporting the WIF increase for the town of Sandwich. So I thought that was really interesting. So really insightful meeting. Dave Mason and Leanne were both excellent.
And that was unsolicited support, as I understand it?
Oh yeah, completely, and I can share the video with you. They've done a video for their members.
Wow.
Yep.
Fantastic. Okay. Can we move on then to Town Hall Annex disposition, draft data request for proposals?
I can help with this, I think. So what you have in your packet is a memo which outlines a proposed schedule and a draft RFP. It is a draft, we do have a little bit more homework to do on it, working with Leanne Drake. Ralph Vitaco left us with a great start on that, but it just needs a little tweaking. So the schedule that we're looking at that seems to work with all the pieces would be to have a conceptual approval of the draft RFP, and I can walk you through that in a minute, this evening or a subsequent evening, if you'd like more time with it. We would then complete the draft RFP, get it to town council to review. We are working on the marketing now, we're in fact meeting with a videographer tomorrow that does 3D videos. We did the same thing when we did the Deacon Eldred. It just gives folks who are interested a better visual. It's very affordable to do. We would do a little website and then outreach contacting folks that may have interest or have expressed interest previously, and that's something we'll do over the next several weeks, once we have an approved RFP. And then January, we would bring to you a final draft RFP and a schedule to issue. We would then, of course, continue the marketing efforts. We'd propose a site visit in the February, March timeframe. You know, we would move as swiftly as we could responsibly move. Proposals would be due in that same timeframe, and then we'd be looking at reviewing proposals in the very early spring. Um, proposals would be due in that same timeframe and then we'd be looking at reviewing proposals in the very early spring. It would put you in a position, if we had a, um, responsive and responsible proposal that the select board is willing to endorse, uh, you could execute a land development agreement, a notice of intent, and then, then you would finalize any of the easements. So any of the, um, features that you're willing to entertain for potential develop, potential reuse there are, would not be, um, encumbered until you have a proposal that you would accept and a purchase and sales agreement. So it's a very, um, methodical process that puts you in the driver's seat in terms of making decisions based on what the proposed uses might be. And then if all goes well, um, subject to financing and any, you know, permitting or other contingencies, you could close, uh, in the springtime.
Thank you. I'm sure that overview of the chronology is very helpful to the public. And, uh, yes, we can hope for a closing in the spring of 2025. Sounds good. Anybody else have any questions for Heather on that subject?
We, we really like doing this. We have a good time doing this type of work. Um, it does allow us to engage with the community and, you know, we'll look forward to doing a, a good job for you.
Great, thank you. We have every confidence that that's how it'll play out. Select Board meeting proposed for Wednesday, November 20th at 3:00 PM. Any, any discussion on that one? That seems fine.
Okay.
I know there's a school committee meeting that night, but I don't think they will be here for three hours, if I can say it that way.
I don't think we will be there for three hours.
Okay, thank you very much. Other matters, not response, not reasonably anticipated, but by the chairman, I have none. Anybody else? Okay. New business, request for temporary mobile home at 27 Route 130. Is there anybody here to address that? No, I, I, I didn't see any, uh, objections by the building department or, uh, or EMS or anybody else, you know, I, I.
No.
It, it all looks solid to me.
Yes, the only, um, sort of minor nuance that came up is just the, the duration. And the building commissioner is recommending that you put a timeframe on that. He's recommending that the initial timeframe be six months and that with a six-month renewal, you know, so long as there's no issues there. It's just helpful to him to know that there's a specific timeframe. And that is the only, only issue in the.
Is this request because of the fire or something?
Yeah. Right now.
So maybe to May 15th. That's just a, give you about six months with a renewal of six months.
I would presume an endorsement of this plan would be sufficient? Or do you need a motion to endorse it?
I, I think we, we need your vote. It's a select board's vote.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the request for a temporary mobile home, 27 Route 130, with a timeframe of six months with the option of it to be renewed.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we put a date on that?
I was, yeah, I was going through my head.
May 15th, 2025.
May 15th and renewal to, through, uh, November 15th of 2025.
Yep, that'll give you six months, six months.
Great.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second as amended by, by Mr. Miller. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four zero. Okay, proposed sign for 100 Route 6A.
So we're doing quite a bit of sort of housekeeping on the building, which we are about to, um, celebrate our second anniversary at 100 Route 6A. Um, that includes putting the time of operation on the doors. So when folks come up, they know when we're open and closed. Um, some, some more informational signs on the interior of the building so that people know what's happening in each of the offices, um, some small furnishing improvements. And lastly, a sign so that folks know where they are. Um, this sign has been prepared by Dan Farrington, who's done several of the other signs, um, in Sandwich. Um, looks very much like what you might see at the Public Works Facility. I drove by several others today, but I can't remember what they are, but it's a pretty common approach. Um, staff all weighed in and recommend it. Um, we do need to go to the historic, uh, historic commission, historic district commission, um, for approval. So I would ask for your, um, uh, consent and approval subject to the HDC acceptance.
Heather, which ways is saying, where is the sign gonna be?
Will be in the same location that the, um, bank's sign was, which is on the left side of the entranceway on the way in. As you're entering the drive, it would be on your left. That's where the sign was. If there's a preference on that, we could look at another spot, but that seemed to work great for the bank. They're nice signs.
And, and this, um, I know we're going to refer it, if you will, to the historic, uh, commission and, and, is this on the website? I'm sorry.
No, I don't, no, it's not been on the website at all.
Okay, that could be fine.
Make a motion, we approve the proposed sign for Route 100, I mean, for 100 Route 6A as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, request for support on paint stewardship regis- legislation. Is anyone here to discuss that with us?
So.
You first.
Well, um, it's the, Mr. Irwin was here several weeks ago under public comment, provided you a significant, um, packet of information. Um, and has really done an impressive job across the Commonwealth introducing this topic. Um, I, we wanted to make sure that our own staff involved with, um, solid waste and waste management had a chance to take a look at it. So we did have Paul Tilton take a look. Um, you can see his comment in the packet where he's essentially supportive. Um, uh, but wanted to make sure that, that you all knew and the community knew that as a result of the legislation, that the cost of paint is likely to go up because of the cost of disposal. Um, but that the effort itself was well worthwhile and has been endorsed across the state um, by many communities and the Mass Municipal Association.
Yes, sir.
In my conversations with Heather, um.
Could you, uh, could you restate your name, please?
Oh, my name is Tom Irwin. I live in Dalton, Massachusetts.
Okay, and, and your affiliation with this legislation is?
Um, I am part of Dalton's Waste Management Recycling Committee. And in order to get this law passed for Dalton, I have to get it passed for the entire state.
Thank you.
And this evening, um, I appear primarily to answer questions. Um, I think you folks are fairly well briefed on the matter. I would have a brief comment to make on, on the topic. And this is in regard to the status of this bill. I think it puts things in perspective. And that is that legislators have made clear that in order for paint stewardship to receive serious consideration and the support of leadership to make it a law, municipalities must demonstrate that addressing the solid waste issue, beginning with paint stewardship, is a municipal priority. In July, 78 municipalities, which represented a total of 27% of the state's population, had made such statements of support. This caused the bill to be considered, but not compel sufficient leadership support to send the bill to the floor for vote. More support was clearly needed. Therefore, with this in mind, and since we are aware that this is going to be something that the Sandwich residents will appreciate, and since this law will save RDP money for Sandwich, and since reducing waste is critical to our future, uh, on that basis, I respectfully request that the Sandwich Select Board add their valued endorsement of paint stewardship by passing the supportive, uh, resolution that you folks are, have in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any and all questions you might have.
Thank you.
Could you just run through the process? If you accept this, you will hold sites, collection sites?
Um, the way that it will operate in terms of collection will be that the small paint retailers, uh, such as Sherwin-Williams, Ace Hardware, True Value Hardware, will be collection points. And typically, um, and in most states that have the program, that's, uh, there is a, such a site within 15 miles of every residence. Uh, the law guarantees that that will, there will be a collection site within 15 miles of 95% of residences. And when the material is collected in a tote at that site and it is full, a national agency is called by that collection site to come pick up the tote, bring it to a facility. We'll actually, um, reprocess that paint and, uh, and, and provide them with an empty. And the process just continues in such a manner.
So where are there any costs? Are there any costs, anybody?
Yes. Uh, the singular cost is a 75 cent to a dollar fee in, uh, the states of Connecticut, Rhode Island and Maine. Um, it's been 75 cents since the program's inception. In Maine, in, uh, New Hampshire, it was 99 cents, uh, per gallon. Uh, that was, went up to a dollar 35 in May because there were so many Massachusetts residents and New Hampshire residents that to return their paint to New Hampshire that they had to get more money to manage all the paint.
With them on vacation.
Right. So, um, the, the 75 cents is not a tax. It's called an echo fee. It's a part of the total ownership cost of having paint. It's the disposal phase of the, uh, ownership. Um, and, uh, that's how it's reasoned out.
So that would be, that fee would be on the price of the paint when I buy it, right?
Correct, and it'll be listed separately on your, on your bill. The genesis of it being an external fee came from the negotiations between 2002 and 2008 where manufacturers, retailers, consumers and, um, government agencies, state agencies sat together and hashed out what it was going to take for everybody to, uh, be happy or accept what was going on. And in the course of that, they found that if it was an external fee, it would actually be less expensive than if with the cost was actually to be borne by manufacturers because they'd have to put, you know, additional costs on top of that. So that's how it ended up being there. And the beauty of it is that 75 cent fee has not changed a dime or penny uh, since its inception in Connecticut, Rhode Island and Maine.
Are you first, Patrick?
So how would this differ from what we currently do? Cause right now, we're, we're under the auspices of Barstool County and the towns on, in Barstool County collectively are involved in paint reclamation together. So how, so how is this different? Now, and I, I understand if, if it's okay if what we're doing is okay and we can perpetuate that, if what we can help you with is lending legislative support. So I'm, that's.
You've essentially captured what's going on. I am not intimately familiar with Bourne, although I do know Phil somewhat.
Yeah.
But if.
See, we have hazardous waste collection days.
Correct.
Four times a year and that's where people have, that's been the place where you execute this kind of protection of the environment.
What will happen?
We've done very well with it, actually. With, numbers are quite good for Barstool County.
With the oil-based paints, uh, the numbers you will see at those household hazardous waste days will drop, um, roughly by 50%. The total amount of volume you see, um, because that oil-based paint will be returned to, to paint retailers. And instead of, um, clean harbors taking it and incinerating it, it will go to special plants where it'll be used as a co-fuel and the ash that results from its incineration will end up in, embedded in concrete um, be, as part of concrete manufacturer. It's not, you know, uh, something that ends up in a landfill.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the other adjunct that I think you guys can be excited about is if they do collect, um, latex through Bourne and try to do some form of a swap shop, what can't be, it isn't, nobody wants that, you know, battleship gray color or whatever. They can, it will be picked up and hauled to a reprocessing plant, reblended, changed color, blah, blah, blah. And it will be resold and reused. So it can be a nice adjunct.
I worked in Brewster and we, it was more convenient for us for the, to serve the people to collect it in totes and call and have the totes taken away than it was to have people have to hold on to the paint all year long to get rid of it on one day. So I'm in favor of this, you know, helping you to get the legislature to, it seems like everybody has to do that these days with our legislature. They need a little nudging like they did on question one.
Right.
So I would be in favor of supporting this.
The, uh, the 75 cent fee, um, who collects it, who retains it, and then who distributes it?
Um, the fee is collected at point of sale and by the, by the retailers, of course, and it's all retailers will do this. And even if you purchased your paint online, that 75 cent fee will still be there. The monies are collected and they are sent to a nonprofit called Paint Care, which was constructed by the paint retailers, and excuse me, paint manufacturers to handle that whole business for them. You know, the managing, picking it up and getting it to, you know, negotiating, doing the annual audits, whichever, it's done on a state-by-state basis. The audit then goes to the DEP for review. Um, so, um, the 75 cents goes to that nonprofit entity called Paint Care and they do their thing. And even the costs to the state, um, when we have people that we pay to go around and make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do and we go and review that audit, that's all paid for out of that 75 cents.
What's the burden on the, on the retailers?
A tote in their, in their back room.
So they don't have to, you're saying the availability to pick up, so they don't have to store it for anything to, I mean, just pick up the phone and call somebody?
If, it's amazing. In, um, New York, uh, the pickup time is somewhere between one and two, uh, business days. And in Connecticut, um, different, uh, pickup group, they, they pick up within three to four business days. And, um, I, I think it's kind of funny. When I started this, I said, man, this seems too good to be true. So I said, well, I don't like that feeling. So I went to Connecticut, Vermont and New York and talked with a bunch of retailers and consumers to make sure that, is this thing really working the way it's supposed to be working here or is that there's some smoke here? And to a person, to a, to a, in a store, they said, no, there's no smoke. This really works out okay. With, the small retailers love it because the deals means more foot traffic, you know? Home Depot and Lowe's and Walmart don't take their paint back. They, they're not against the program, but they don't. But they're all those paint, all those cans of paint kind of come to us. Well, that's great. We sell a lot more brushes, touch-up paint and all that kind of stuff. So we're happy. So the big guys are happy. They don't have to bother with it. The little guys are happy because they sell more. So it, it, everybody's, it's working for everybody.
Automotive waste oil was probably the first commodity where this took place. You're not even aware of it. You buy your oil. There's a fund out there.
Put in a tank at the dump.
Yeah, we used to burn it.
I got, I got a question. This 75 cent charge, how does that get generated? I mean, when the people buy the paint at the store or they drop it off to get rid of it?
No, you pay it at the time of purchase.
At the purchase.
Right.
Pay 75 cents every time you buy paint.
A gallon.
An extra 75 cents on that. Now, I'm just wondering from the aspects of everything here, is this something that, that we should vote on or it should go to the town meeting? Can we decide for the whole town of Sandwich that they're gonna pay 75 cents every time they go to buy paint? Or should we let the, let the voters decide that? That's a question I have.
I think this is a, a policy vote on whether to support legislation moving forward. So the state then carries the burden of the public process. You're just saying this is something we would endorse, um, pursuing at the state level.
That's right. And we wouldn't be involved in it until there was funding developed that would fulfill our end of the mission. So.
Does a 75 cents apply to a quart of paint and a gallon?
No, it's a buck 60 for five gallons instead of 3.75. And, uh, for a, for a. And for anything less than a quart, there's no fee. And for a quart, I think it's thirty-five cents.
And this was undertaken in Connecticut, you said, and Vermont?
Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont, New Ham, Vermont and New York, yes, those five. Five of our neighbors, five out of six of our neighbors have it. New Hampshire, if this legislation passed the House but got stuck in the Senate because they reviewed it with their Department of Environmental Services, and they had concerns about some of the language. Those modifications are being made in the next session of the New Hampshire Legislature that we'd expect this to pass.
Okay. New Jersey, anything from them?
New Jersey actually passed the House and the Senate in New Jersey, and then Governor, he was, he ran for president, I apologize, that, Christie. He said no when it crossed his desk.
Get it in the Lincoln Tunnel. He's just going to put it in the Lincoln Tunnel.
How long have some of these states been doing this?
It started out in 2008 with Oregon, and it, 2010, I think it was, in California, and then the first state to pass it in our area was Connecticut, and that was like in the 2011 timeframe. Then Rhode Island, then Maine, and Vermont, or, yeah, Vermont simultaneously, and New York was just in 2019.
So it's a significant time. Is there any kickbacks as issues?
I'm in, I have conversations with the gentleman who orchestrates this program in Connecticut, and he's just totally delighted with it.
Mr. Rollis?
And from our perspective, what would be good to know is that, my sense in this is that the cost of this is being covered in Barnstable County by a grant from DEP based on our achievements against the waste ban. So we get, each town gets more grant money when you do better recycling. Brewster was the best, so I, we were very proud of that. And so you get more money for that that you can use for programs like this. So that, that's important for us to find out. It won't change things going forward because once it's enacted statewide, then those fees will come back to us. But it would be worthwhile to, from Paul, to find out from Calliope through the county how the program's currently funded in Barnstable County. We're listed as supporters on the documents under the County of Barnstable, so that's where, under that umbrella. So we're already in the mix, but it would be worthwhile for us to know that. Doesn't change my opinion of it. I think it's a good, it would be a good program because at some point, you're going to come through that fiscal year where you don't get the money. And then you wouldn't, you'd have to pony up the money by individual towns.
Another beauty to this is what it portends. It sets up mattresses, solar panels, lithium car batteries, and packaging are the things to follow this in the pipeline, once this principle is established in our state.
And glass is driving us crazy because it's outside of the deposit scheme.
So your interest, Patrick, is to see if this would affect how the county, do we get anything back from the county?
Yeah, well, we don't get any money, but we get the service. So people four times a year are able to get rid of their old paint through the county process. So we, I want to make sure that, first, we want to get the opinion of the county separate of this, but also what impact will this have on their funding? Or are they adequately funded until this happens?
All right. Well, who are we asking to get back to us on that question?
Well, Paul's our representative through that group. Yeah, the Public Works Director is our representative through the county, so Paul will be able to get that. Paul Tilton will be able to get that, those questions answered.
I think that's important, too.
Yeah, I, that's where my head was going. Thank you. And perhaps we should defer implementation until we get the answer to that question.
I would just note, I think-
But I think that we need to understand that all he's looking for is that we would support this kind of a program in the future, and that when the legislature enacts this, and it won't take in effect until the legislature's got a vote on it, and then we know how that works.
I don't imagine that this will pass much before July of 2026.
Yeah, that's what, so, so we're, he's just trying to create inertia to try to get this passed statewide, which would be, also, I think, is a very good thing for the community because it puts the disposition of waste in the hands of the consumer that generated it. And that's the key thing with this. To me, that's the most important part.
Let's have a comment and a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it's right on this. Yeah, that's why I brought it up. It's on this sheet and where the, where B in Barnstable. Yeah, just for our own, just, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe, this is specific to these listed things. All these things that are not accepted, are some of these accepted by the county now?
Yes, they would be accepted. They would be accepted as part of the hazardous waste.
Yeah, as part of the hazardous waste collection day.
And Paint Care is working on trying to nibble away at the no thank you list to put it over on the will-accept-it list.
Well, I guess my concern would be is if these other things are covered by our Barnstable County, and we, and this goes into effect, your projects, is that going to affect their ability to continue on accepting these things?
No.
Well, no, it won't affect that because that will always have to continue.
Right. Until such time, until such time as the Paint Care can take those items on the right side of the page and manage them, they will have to be dropped off at household hazardous waste days. But those items are really kind of relatively small volume, like less than 5% of the total.
Do you know whether or not the county makes, right now, the county that collects these on four days, do they make anything out of this?
Oh, no, it costs money. It doesn't, there's no making money.
Right.
There's a grant from DEP that generates the money that you, pays the vendor that takes your products out of your car and puts them where they're appropriate. And this has been going on for a long time. It's a fabulous service.
I know.
Yeah, this is just, yeah. Oh, yeah. I think it's a good idea. I think it's more important when you deal with something collectively like this. People always make out.
I want to be sure I understand the question.
Right.
So that I bring you an answer that helps you.
I guess one of the questions, just in general, would be, accepting this program, what effect would it have on the Barnstable County collection process, if any?
Nothing. Until after 2026, and then I'm sure the counties knows all about this. They've probably been talking about this at their meetings.
The whole purpose behind all of it is to remove contaminants from the environment, and that's the goal that Barnstable County has. And they facilitate the programs through grant funding to effectuate the containment of the hazardous chemicals. So I can't speak for Barnstable County, but there are households all over Cape Cod that have half-full paint cans that aren't making it to our hazardous waste pickup.
Ten years ago, we weren't separating paint. It was all going right into our hazardous waste collection and really negatively impacting the cost of those days. Now it's been sorted out, and it turns out that paint is actually really a good recycling product. They're able to, they're able to make a really good product out of old paint.
So Barnstable County is actually supporting this program?
Yep, they signed on. They're one of those.
Calliope Shute was the one that orchestrated the endorsement that they wrote up and so forth and so on. She's made several presentations, you can well imagine, on the topic, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know her numbers well, but she was saying that the amount of money that costs the Cape each year to manage paint is enormous. So she is strongly looking forward. I understand she's retired at this point, but she was very much looking forward to this program coming online. She actually went and in East, I think it was Eastham? Yes, Eastham. She went and met with their select board and argued for passage of it. They decided no because they just didn't, couldn't get past that 75 cent fee, which is, you know, okay, that's their business. But at any rate, the point is, if it gives you any comfort, that that's the path you took with, you know, very strong numbers in support of the financial benefit of this program.
Well, I like the idea that you don't have to wait for one of the four sessions places. You can just bring it right to the-
Any day they're open. Any time they're open.
That's right. You're not storing it.
And they don't care where you got it. They don't care when you got it. In fact-
Or doesn't have to have their stamp, their-
If you brought your paint to Maine, they'd take it. Bring it to Rhode Island, Connecticut, they're going to take it.
We'd rather recycle it, deal with it, than have it in the environment. It's the best thing we can do.
If you're a paint retailer within 10 miles of the border with Massachusetts, 40% of your paint, 60% of your paint is going to be coming from Massachusetts residents, which is pretty impressive. That's people driving to get to turn that over.
I don't see that a problem to support the effort. Doesn't mean that you're going to get it to this state, but who knows?
Exactly. We know about that.
Yeah, I, I didn't, but then the questions created a concern in my mind, but let's see. Can we get a motion to be it resolved that the Select Board urges the Massachusetts General Court and the leadership of both chambers to view the pending paint stewardship legislation favorably and take whatever actions are necessary in this and in future sessions to pass the paint stewardship bills into law, including voting favorably out of any and all committees. A paint stewardship law will begin relieving municipalities and consumers of ever-rising solid waste management costs, significantly reduce the toxic waste going into landfills, and decrease greenhouse gases generated by the paint industry by 4%. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we prove it as presented.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, sir, and-
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support. Very, very valuable.
Only about 300 towns left.
All right. Excuse me. Let's just keep the comments in public if there are questions in the comments. Okay. Oh, the matter is not reasonably anticipated by the chairman. I have none. All good? Anybody for public comment? Closing remarks.
Just want to say that that 111 project is finally near completion. I'm telling you, Heather, we should have made a chart on the wall of the town administrator's office seven years ago. We started for the accomplishments that we've actually pulled off in this town, and that was the big one.
Yep.
We just got to get them to dig the creeks out.
Yeah, let's hope that Old Harbor's next, yes. Yes. And we were very fortunate, more appropriately, the Army Corps is very fortunate that Great Lakes was the low bidder. They're a good company, obviously. Okay, then-
Think of the mechanics involved in that. Piping that slurry nine thousand feet.
Hey, and, and the fact that the rolling stock is underwater nine tenths at a time, and yet it, it's still the rolling stock. It's amazing how they keep it all together.
It was interesting, though, Bud had mentioned that they were surprised at the amount of rocks they were picking up off of Gussit in the sand.
Boy, it's beautiful sand.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Should be filled back in in a year or two.
I think we'll all be pleased at the end of the day, and hopefully it stays in place for a while. Then let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace. It are thoughts and prayers. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Will convene at special town meeting on November 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.